Good morning.
Good morning, we're gonna get our meeting started here, this is a Yamaha County Board of Commissioners formal session, September eighteenth at ten AM. Ken, you want to start us in place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, seize calendar session, do we have any revisions or changes that need to be made?
The dinner tomorrow night, the
Harvest nights?
Is that on there? I don't know if you guys are going or not, I'll be there.
I will be there, yes.
Yeah, I don't know if it's on the count, okay.
Okay.
Speak up, we cannot hear you.
Sorry, sir.
Is your microphone on?
Yeah, it's on, like, move it. Sorry about that. That was calendar session, up next is gonna be public comments, we do have quite a few, per policy, we're gonna limit them to three minutes each. And we're gonna start with, I'm just gonna go within the order that they were given to me, and first up is Ron Vrooman from Beaverton. If you could come up and state your name and address. And Ken will start the clock.
This work? Yep.
Yep, I can hear ya. Good morning.
I'm here to support Sam Elliott. Out of the nine sheriffs confronted for not having their bona fides, their credentials in order, he's one of two that appeared and faced us and stood and delivered and stood and received. And he did it in front of our court in his building. That takes courage. And his paperwork, he brought it to us, but it didn't match, didn't match muster, didn't, didn't make it. But he had the courage to do it, and I'd like him to fulfill the obligations of the office of sheriff on Yam Hill County. He's failed miserably on providing the proper credentials, and he did the best out of the thirty-six sheriffs on Oregon. Not one of them has their proper credentials in order, not one of them meets the requirements of ORS two oh six, DPSST, and the county human resources and recorder. That's sad, but Sam has the opportunity to do it. And it requires the knowledge that he has and the knowledge that most of you have here. I've been sending emails to all of you frequently, and I use Proton, which is a specialized encrypted kind of an email, and it tells me who opens my emails and who doesn't. And it tells me who sends them straight to trash without opening them. And each email I send to you folks is a petition for redress of grievance, because we have one. We have the state of Oregon, all cap versions of the state of Oregon. What you have there on the, the flag, and a small aside, the flag you're showing, the National Ensign, with the gold fringe and the eagle on top, you should look up the significance of that, and then look up the significance of the United States of America's flag without the gold fringe and with a ball on the top of the staff. Those make important differences, just like when you take an oath, the oath has to be
Three minutes.
To the laws of nature and nature's God included. If you can't get that into your oath, then you can't be in your position. Because this country is based on that. And we have to do the very best we can to return Oregon to a constitutional republic in form of government. We have not had government on Oregon since nineteen ten, and the
Ron, I'm gonna have to ask you to go ahead and wrap up your comments.
Speak up.
Can you wrap up your comments, please?
Oh, I'm talking too long, all right. Article seven amended is in our constitution without any evidence that it is legitimate. And we have gone to the archives three times and they cannot provide the evidence, I yield.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Next up, we have Philip Dolison. Come on up, name and address, please.
I'm up here from Jacksonville, Oregon. My concern is with our sheriffs. It is my understanding that the highest duty of any sheriff in the land is to protect we, the people, from our government, and that's not happening. In my case, I bought land in Jacksonville, Oregon about twenty-six years ago. I paid nine hundred dollars a year taxes, property taxes. Now, in twenty twenty-five, my next tax bill will be twelve thousand dollars, and I have no way of covering that. And so what I'm faced with is to have my property, which I'm supposed to own, taken from me for lack of taxes, and which means really that I don't own the land or the house, it's owned by the government, and I'm just leasing it. And my only concern is that whether I can even stay in Oregon. I'm probably gonna have to sell my land and move out of Oregon, and that shouldn't be, my, my house should not be allowed to be for auction, for lack of taxes, and it is the duty of the sheriff to stop that, because that is unconstitutional. I yield.
Thank you, I would encourage you to reach out to your county and talk to them about that.
Need a name, for the record.
Did you state your name for the record?
Oh, my name is Phil Dolison.
Thank you. Next up is gonna be Robert Graves. Name and address, please. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, and thank you for seeing me. I'm Robert Graves, I live in Eugene, Oregon. And my family settled Yamaha Hall before it was Yam Hill, and we've been here a long time. We're wagon train people. We eat fried chicken in the Sheridan Park quite often. Most of the property around there, if you go down the, any kind of a title company search, you're gonna find Graves at the top. In those days, it was a donation land claim, but when we got here, it was just a squatter, because they didn't have anybody surveying anything yet. The reason I'm here, the sheriff's position in any county is the highest position there is. He's in charge of the law as he sees it, and he thinks he has to have help in interpreting it. The common process is that he'll have a legal counsel of some type talking in his ear. That's happening all over Oregon. And the problem with that is Oregon law schools do not teach American law, and they never have. They teach British law, and they always have. And when a young man, and I've got several very close friends, been in the legal profession as lawyers, attorneys for over forty-five years, never once was allowed to study American law. You do not get any credit for that in a law school. They teach you how to pass your bar exam, what's the problem with that? It's a private club, it has no authority at all. The Bar Association in nineteen ten lobbied the legislature to abolish the circuit court, and they did. They've never receded it ever. They then made a C corporation, they named it judiciary, it's a private club. And within there is a department that says circuit court, a club within a club. And their internal rules are that only one of their members can speak in a courtroom, so right now, people go into a courtroom and they think that they're under a legitimate court with a real judge, and they're not. We followed a case all the way through, we took one particular, it was a felony charge in Lane County, and I took it all the way through the Supreme Court, another corporation, all the way through to the top of the government, a corporation, and then found that everybody involved was a treasonous person. They didn't even know it, they didn't mean to be, they are just ignorant of the real law. So I took it to the district court, right straight to the district court, Oregon, Mark Hatfield Building in Portland, sat right there with prosecutor representative, because Natalie happened to be in trial at the time, so she sent her attorney out to sit with us. I had a witness with me, and in the process, I gave him a document of seventy-one charges of treason for the state calling itself state of Oregon, a corporation, not the Oregon we're standing on, a piece of paper in a filing cabinet in the public service building in Salem. State of Oregon is not Oregon, it's just a corporation providing services on behalf of Oregon, and people don't know anything about that. So what happens?
I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap up your comments.
We took this all the way to the appellate court, and then the Supreme Court, and it's in Clarence Thomas's lap right now. Seventy-one charges of treason, we're not trying to punish anybody, we just want to get people doing the right job. We want you to do your job. Sam Elliott may be a good man, I don't know, but he doesn't have his bona fides, and it's your job to make sure he does. Even before somebody goes for sheriff in an election, they have to have somebody see if they're qualified before they can even be put before the voters, and that's your job.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you so much for hearing me.
Next up, we have Charlie White, name and address, please. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having us, I need to talk fast, and I write, I write, I don't extempore. This is the Commerce of Liberty and Freedom.
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Charlie White, Portland, Oregon, Washington County.
Thank you.
The Commerce of Liberty versus Freedom, liberty is to privilege as freedom is to rights. Freedom encompasses that part of our God-given inherent unalienable rights. Liberty is loosening the restrictions set upon us by a controlling parent, a jailer, or an overbearing government. Here's an example, you're driving down the road in a vehicle which has a title owned by the state, that is, the state owns your car or truck tagged with its VIN number, much as we are registered as chattel with our EIN entity, identity number. Then we are required to pay for a license to drive, additionally, we must DMV, pay for and regularly update tags for the car license plate, insurance, of course. Rates will be going up, by the way, with the recent transportation legislation, not to mention the potential of toll roads, which are unlawful, all of it is. Just like being a US citizen given privileges by the government instead of being a man or woman with God-given rights, I liken being given liberty, which is freedom from enslavement, to being given the privilege of driving. The United States of America's Constitution states clearly that we have the right to travel the freeways, highways, and byways freely. Long gone is the happy traveler, unbound in his automobile, cruising at what he considers a reasonable and safe speed to his destination uninterrupted. Instead, and unless every detail is followed to a T, he is stopped, given a citation, a ticket, a court date, it's a bank, to pay for whatever the infraction, without submitting to the numerous required compliances, that once happy traveler will surely be left unsafe by the side of the road as he watches his automobile being towed off to impoundment where he or she will be required to retrieve the state's automobile with the help of a kind friend or the expense of a pay-to driver, only to lay out hundreds, if not thousands, of dollars to reclaim their, not their, automobile owned by the state that was stolen by the state, so they can travel to the illegal court, bank, for an appearance to pay for not complying to the rules of the road written and enforced by unelected entities who get a government paycheck to make rules that contradict our constitutional creator-given inherent unalienable rights to freely travel to our destination in safety and happiness. The Declaration of Independence suggests the opportunity and goal of instituting new government based on a new foundation, new principles, think from admiralty law to common law, from de facto to de jure law, from the commerce of legal to the freedom, safety, and happiness that can come when the new foundation and principles are embraced for the good of the people. Our sheriffs should be our first line of protection, but instead, they are just another enforcement arm of the corporation that gives us privileges and liberties. that gives us privileges and liberty only if we comply to each and every rule, code, statute, law, ordinance, court assignment, and fee. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you very much. I can't understand the last name on this, but the first name is Thomas S. Perfect. Come on up. Name and address, please.
Old Stone Village, Jamil County, McMinnville, Oregon.
Appreciate it.
What I'm gonna talk about is not about the man. It's about the sheriff's office. The Oregon State Constitution circa 1859 demands that the sheriff's office take an oath to uphold the Constitution on Oregon circa 1859 to protect and defend the American people on Oregon. I'm sure that Sam is an honorable man. But what the American people on Oregon need is an oath to the Constitution and also to protect and defend the American people. Right now, Yamhill County Incorporated is owned and controlled by the Oregon Bar Association. And their allegiance is to the Office of the British Crown. And if you start checking this, you will find this out. Just like the United States Incorporated, there are all for profit corporations owned and operated by the bar attorneys. And that is treasonous. What we want is a sheriff that will uphold the Constitution, protect and defend the American people. So we are free. Right now, as US citizens, you are owned by the Bar Association. I am an American. I am free. And if you're going to be free, you're gonna have to stand up and fight for your rights. I yield.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the last one that I have here is Cynthia Paul Matier. Come on up. Name. Wait till you get to the microphone, please. Good morning. Name and, that's all right. Name and address, please. Thank you.
Cynthia Paul Matier, Portland, Washington, not Washington County, Multnomah County. I am going to start with a small prayer. Lord, I thank you for this day and I thank you for the people gathered here. And I just ask right now that they would have ears to hear and eyes to see the, the truth of what is happening on our nation at this time, in our state, on our nation, on every county and in every city. And Lord, I ask right now that you would heal our land and bring peace among the people. Father, awaken, oh sleepers, awaken. And I pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen. So a number of years ago, I was called out of ministry and I took a year off, my husband and I, and then the Lord sent me in to government. I started as, and I still am, a PCP on Multnomah County. And I'm gonna share some of the things that I was told by the Lord. When I joined the Republican Party, it was right during COVID. I would not have done it. I would not have signed up if I knew COVID was coming. I would not have done it. But I did it. And the first thing that I found out was that the Republican Party was just as evil as the Democrat Party. That, that, and it's ripping itself apart. I will be going to the platform next week to vote on what the Republicans stand for, which is not a good thing right now. Where our, our state alone is tearing itself apart. And the Lord told me not to identify with politics because politics is polytheism. And this was his breakdown to me. Polytheism, as in the Republicans and the Democrats, the Sadducees and the Pharisees, that ultimately brought our Lord and Savior to his death and demise. And that ticks is blood sucking, disease carrying vermin. And he told me that the parties, that, that not only are they both evil, but they cannot be fixed. The second thing he told me was when he sent me in and joined this group five years ago, was that we would use their own laws to bring this down because it is illegal. I'm gonna read Article 1, Section 1 now from our own Constitution on the state of Oregon. "We declare that all men, when they form a social compact, are equal and right, that all power is inherited in the people and all free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness. And they have at all times a right to alter, reform, or abolish the government in such manner as they may think proper." Which is what gives us the right to become a common law court, which we legitimately did. All the paperwork went through to Salem, to all the right places. And they acquiesced and they acquiesced and they acquiesced. I yield.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's the last one that I have. Sure.
I have one.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there anybody else that has a comment that's in the audience? Or anybody online? Raise your virtual hand. Seeing none? All right, we're gonna move on. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Item E is Department Updates. There is none. F is Work Session. There is none. I believe Cynthia was set for today, but now she's on for October 16th.
Correct.
G is Consent Agenda. We have some surplus items and Transit has some surplus buses. And a couple contracts and some personnel stuff. I would move approval. Any further discussion?
None for me.
None? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Old Businesses H, there is none. Other Businesses I. I1 is Consideration of Approval of the Yamhill County Parks System Plan. If anybody has any questions, we have Mark and Travis here. Any questions?
I don't know that I have any questions based on what we talked about the last time they were here. Not a lot has changed. I saw a list of, of a few things, few, few minor changes in there, some direction. I think the problem that we have with it, though, is that there's not a, there's no funding stream for any of this. So if we pass this, we are essentially, in my mind, we should be committing towards getting those funding streams, whether it's through general fund dollars or to help them create their own funding streams down the road. Or, you know, I think that this plan is requesting an investment to the parks. And if we're not, then if we pass it, then we're just doing another 20 years of spending money and putting it on the shelf and collecting dust. And it stays the same. So if we pass this, I would love it if there was a commitment towards just finding that revenue stream for these guys, whether that's through TLT, whether it's through general fund dollars, whether it's, you know, obviously, the gold standard is a, is a campground to do that. And that's expensive. So enabling these guys to be able to have, to do their best work and maybe starting with some low hanging fruit. And I haven't really seen or heard a lot of ideas on that outside of parks, outside of a campground. So I, I'd have a problem with passing it as just a, check the box that we did and it's gonna sit on the, on the shelf for 20 years unless we're going to commit to that today.
I agree. And I think this is the first step to being able to see what funding opportunities are out there for us. And I guess based on those comments, what I would encourage you to do is go to the Parks Board meetings because those guys are absolutely phenomenal. And what they have done with the direction for this master plan and just our onsite visit that we did yesterday at Crabtree and the ideas that are coming out of that Parks Board are absolutely next level and phenomenal. So what I'd ask for you to do, so that we don't duplicate, because basically what you have just said, they talked about last night and they've been talking about for the last six months.
I've had long conversations with the board chair there just about this.
I would encourage you to go to the environment of those Parks Board meetings. It's, it's different. And I'm not.
You're a liaison there. Do you wanna switch off or do you wanna go together? Or how do we notice that?
Okay. I'm not sure where you're going with that. Any one of us commissioners can go to any department at any time. I'm encouraging you to go.
Oh, I mean the Parks Board meetings, because you usually go to those. Do you?
I, yes, I do.
Yeah. Do you want to?
Add yourself to them. I'm encouraging you to go to the Parks Board meetings because everything that you just mentioned, they've discussed in heavy detail as far as what they want and what the visions are. Crabtree last night, there was a lot of great ideas that came down on what the vision is for Crabtree as it's coming back from us from CPRD. So I'd encourage you, if, if you wanna make comments like that, to be involved with the Parks Board.
Well, I think they can talk about all the things that they wanna do, but it has to come to us to get approval for that. So are we going to?
I agree, but you just made comments that the Parks Board has talked about for the last six months.
Right.
I'm asking you to be engaged with them. And you'll know exactly what's going on there. And I agree that their funding sources need to be set. But the whole point of that was get this master plan done. And thanks to Commissioner Starrett and Commissioner Burshower for getting that 100 grand in there. And by the way, during my updates, I was gonna bring this up also, that if we can in fact fund 100 grand for a master plan, this was back in May of 2022 when we allocated that during the budget season. And I think we need to start addressing this. And I talked to the Parks Board last night when we were at Crabtree, getting them some seed money. But if we do get that Parks Board money, it's based on this Parks Plan, which I appreciate. In this plan, it shows the sustainability of any project that's gonna go into a park, that it starts paying for itself, that can go back into parks and become regenerative.
Completely agree.
So I think we're on the same page, but I really truly, based on those comments, you need to be engaged with the Parks Board if you're that.
And like I said, I have been with the, with the board chair because I know that you usually go to those.
I'm telling you what, it is a way different world if you're actually at the Parks Board meeting. So I'm encouraging you to do that.
I was trying to make it to the Crabtree one last night, but it was kid soccer things and so on. So I'll, I'll make time to go for it for sure to the, I know they meet monthly and it's on my calendar.
So what I wanted to bring up, I really appreciate you guys adding Jim Colbert to the Parks Board list, kinda in memorandum of him and his passing during this whole process. And he was probably one of the most dedicated Parks Board members that may ever come to that Parks Board. I mean, he was passionate about it. He actually stepped up in a program for donations to go to our Yamhill County Parks. And he started it with $10,000 of seed money. So the passion that he had was fantastic. I'm glad to see that his name got added to it. And then I already touched on the seed money. I think we do truly need to start thinking about that as May rolls around. And even if we have to have a specific work session with Travis before that time, start thinking about where we can, how much, maybe what one, I guess, solid program would be or infrastructure upgrade to one park would be. And let's start like honing in on that and see what it is. I think after last night's discussion, it seems like we'd wanna really focus on something that didn't require a lot of power or sewer. A lot of those infrastructure upgrades, because those are the expensive ones, right? So we wanna focus on if there is a way to get a campground in or yurts or something like that. So I think the future to come on that would be a work session and we can discuss that. So thank you guys very much. Commissioner Starrett, do you have any?
Just a couple of thoughts, just in retrospect. When I first became a commissioner, I was a liaison to, to parks. And it was a completely different organization. The Parks Board was, had an entirely different feel to it. And then it, it sort of became one of those things that nobody seemed to care about very much. We had trouble getting folks to join the, the Parks Board. There wasn't a whole lot of engagement. It seemed like we were always looking at other things that were more important than parks. Commissioner Johnston came along and, and really took us, because I remember making all the tours of all the parks and looking at all the undeveloped properties and thinking, this is nice someday. We'll get to do something here. And then you came along and you really ginned up the machine in terms of interest, possibilities, and sweat equity. And I've seen you out there cleaning stuff up with your own hands and getting folks interested in this. So I appreciate your passion because that's pretty much spurred the interest that we're now seeing in, in, in parks in general. The parks, the plan, this, this is one of those things that unless we know where we're going, we can't figure out how to pay for it or how to, you know, what's, what's the plan? Yeah, we know we need a lot of money to do all the things that are in here because this would be wonderful. I would like to see us understand and memorialize that this, this is what we'd like to see. Next step is, okay, what's our funding gonna look like? I am not in favor of ask, of asking for another tax. And I've for years been pretty much against transit lodging taxes. I think we could pretty much capitalize on the fact that we as a county do not have one. And I think we can use that in the promotion of our county, but that's another subject. I also know that our general fund is woefully underfunded and it's getting more so as the years go by. So I would not look at that as a source. What I do look at is what happened at Ed Grenfell Park. And I know that was on a small scale. It was really just to beef up and to get some improvements to the dog park. And you had a lot of people out there. How much did they raise in terms?
They raised over $10,000. I think it actually exceeded that, right, Travis? Nobody heard that. It was $11,500.
Yeah. So there were a lot of people who maybe never went to that park and thought, wow, this is a county park. I didn't know about it. And go around to all the different parks and really kind of get that same kind of interest from every particular group that might find interest in one, one resource. I think that's the kind of thing we need to be looking at.
I think the other thing down that avenue is that base, this is an upgrade from our last Parks Master Plan we had. This one, to me, has more realistic, even though they're very expensive. I mean, we were talking about last night going across, over Crabtree with replacing a playground section of that for 180 grand was the projection to replace what was there. I mean, this stuff is expensive and that's just for a basic playground. So I, I think we're, even though there's like a lot of high dollar amount for projects in here, if we can just pick one of them, at least this plan is more realistic. And I think the importance of that is for when we do see if we can, see if there's alternative funding out there for grants, that because it is realistic, we have better opportunities to get some funding. So.
And, and my comments are more based on that I don't think that, you know, a sustainable funding stream of $11,000 a year for, for a volunteer, which we all know volunteers are very hard to come by by now. We've all been on boards and so on. But, you know, those things are hard to pull off and it exhausts volunteers. And so I do think that we do, we should be looking at other revenue streams, whether that's grants, but prioritizing that for the parks because they've done the work of doing the surveys, of putting together the plan. And if we don't make that commitment, then it's all for nothing. And we have another plan that sits for 20 years. And that's what I don't wanna see. I wanna see us invest in our parks because that's what 200 and or 600 and some odd people, 70 people had, had asked for, right? So that took the time to, to do these things. So I, I am in complete favor. I love the, the plan. I just wanna make sure that it doesn't sit on the shelf and collect dust for another 20 years.
Thank you.
And that there is an investment. And it sounds like there is from at least one commissioner. So thank you and, and I would move approval.
Motion's been made. Any further discussion? None. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thanks Travis and Mark.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And everybody else that's walking away. Did we get boring or what?
Is it something?
See you guys later.
Let's wait.
Yep. Thanks Travis.
Thank you.
We need to do more on, no, everybody sit down. All right, moving, moving on. Item I2 is Consideration of Approval Amendment Number 1 to Agreement Number 185833 between Yamhill County and the Oregon Health Authority Board Order 25-269 for Public Health Services Adding $29,879.82 in Funding.
A couple of things about this. I wanna talk about whenever we have a contract with OHA, there are always concerns because OHA pretty much plays by the rules of, you know, our way or the highway. And I had a long discussion with our HHS director yesterday about And I had a long discussion with our HHS Director yesterday about some of the program elements in this. This is regarding funding for um, immunization services. And while I believe that the county does have a role in making sure that we provide access for vaccines that people might want to have, I've seen that and I will be voting to approve this. I I do so with such grave reservations because of what OHA, the onus that it puts on on the counties. Where they're extremely aggressive, you know, in terms of uh, immunization uh, outreach and basically kind of strong arming folks. They've got this one particular program element, two year old, increasing two-year-old vaccination rates. So whenever you see anything that there is basically an incentive to increase something, there's also an element of what is pretty much the enforcement piece of this, whether it's a school exclusion, any of that. So I do have concerns about it. I I would just caution people to know that since our governor has ramped things up and pushed back on the CDC at the federal level, pulling back on some of the requirements or the recommendations for the COVID vaccine, for instance, they've said healthy pregnant women and children should not receive it. Our governor has said, not only are we going to push for that, but we're going to join an alliance of Western states that will push back on any of the CDC recommendations. I think that we've seen that the CDC has removed that recommendation and then the governor has pushed back on that. We have an extremely aggressive uh, vaccine uh, champion in our governor and in in OHA. And I think that it is concerning to me. We've seen the disastrous policies. This prior board sat here and had to deal with the disastrous public policies that came down from the federal and state governments. And then OHA to the county. What it, what it did was people lost their jobs, people felt pressured, people got sick. And and it is now undeniable that all the information that is out there, it is undeniable that we have seen deaths and illness. The state has got to stop putting pharmaceutical companies profits over public health and finally recognize the injury, not only from vaccines, but from the COVID vaccine. And when we look at the stats, when we look at the numbers, it's undeniable. Some countries have banned it. Some states have said, we're not going to do it. And what does our governor do? She pushes back harder and harder. So folks, you've got to do the, you know, be informed, do your own research because our governor is not going to be your champion. There's a financial incentive at every step. Your doctor gets a bonus, public health gets incentive money. And everybody is tied to this. And so follow the money. So I would move approval of this, but be be careful when you're being encouraged to get yet another vaccine.
Thank you. Uh, motion's been made. Any further discussion?
I I would just say, yeah, I mean, do your research, but talk to your doctor. And um, I would say that there was an ad last year that almost every physician in Yamhill County put out to supporting um, just that of talking to your doctor ex to get professional opinion, which I think anybody would be common sense to. So um, yeah.
Cool. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Three, consideration approval to submit a joint application on behalf of the Yamhill County Sheriff's Office, District Attorney's Office and Health and Human Services. And if awarded, accept the Behavioral Health Deflection BHD Grant Program in the amount of $907,552.
I would move approval.
Motion's been made. Any further discussion?
No.
None.
None? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thanks. Uh, and that brings us to public hearings. There is none. Kay announcements right out of the gate. I will apologize to you guys for cutting us off last time. I'm going to apologize to the audience that sticks around just for our fantastic announcements. So without further ado, we will have announcements today and we're going to kick it off with Commissioner King.
Some have said that this is where the meeting actually happens. So um, yeah. Uh, first off, I want to probably forget some of the things that I had from the last, I think it's been three weeks since we've given announcements. So um, apologies if if that gets lost in the wash. But uh, and I hope everybody's had a first, a good first couple of weeks of of school. Um, I know my kids have are adjusting to that. One of the things I wanted to say last week was just, I think Commissioner Starrett um, said as well um, in the beginning of our meeting, but just acknowledging the death of Charlie Kirk and um, and his commitment to freedom of speech. I think that um, it is that is one of the cornerstones of our government and what makes us a great country. So um, I I think one of the things that he showed us and that was most important to me is just his ability to debate in person and not behind a keyboard. And I think that that is, um, I hope that we can do the same. Uh, taking it back a few weeks, I was at a, the Discovery Academy ribbon cutting. I made a commitment to former Commissioner Burshower to pursue the Recovery High School. Um, that was something that was important to her and it has remained important to me. The Willamette ESD and Max is the principal of of the school. He lives here in Newburgh or up in Newburgh. And we've been engaged. We've had several meetings. Uh, I'm very impressed by the school and yeah, and Marion County's commitment to um, helping them get off the ground. Um, and I know that they would like to have a satellite um, campus here in Yamhill County and I'll be working towards that if um, if uh, I'd love to get your guys' support in that, uh, but I'll be working on it no matter what. Few weeks back, I did go to the the Capitol, sat all day on the Friday to give a testimony, uh, didn't get to give it to Sunday. I saw Commissioner Johnston there on Sunday as well. Um, AOC had asked uh, me to give a testimony um, in my pers- and and how I saw that bill. Um, and I was happy to do so. I think that we need to be holding our um, I am still unhappy with it. I think that ODOT is uh, mismanaged and and I would love to see some more accountability there. Attended the Waste Management Recycle Facility Tour up in Portland, uh, where uh, waste management and they contract with others sending really state-of-the-art facility that they're investing in several others um, around the state to be able to collect recycling and kick out any of the actual garbage. Which was, which was a a great tour. Lots of department head meetings where I'm talking about the, what we'll be talking about with Cynthia, the transportation. That was one of my bigger ones um, that I had come into our work session. Toward the Bad Dog Bakery. Commissioner Starrett, I think you were sick.
Yep.
But congratulations to those guys. They really were able to stretch a lot of their dollars for the grant that they received from the former board. Um, and you know, I know how much some of that equipment costs because I've bought it in the past. And so they they did a really great job of of um, creating a business that will will should last for a long time and and really uh, help streamline their business. Met with uh, Carlton and Yamhill and COG and so on, talking about some more regional water options. Um, I know that Carlton and Yamhill um, are pursuing talks with Hillsborough, which was um, an interesting option to me. Um, and using but uh, to bring water to them and I see Mayor Malcolm's in here, meaning to reach out to see what your guys' opinion is of this as well, but um, I just met with these guys yesterday. And to get water to at least those over 3,350 um, people in those two towns and um, what that would look like for them. Attended Unido's fundraiser on this last Saturday. And I know I'm forgetting probably half a dozen other things, but for the sake of time, I'll wrap it up there.
So um, if you're interested in regional water, there is a uh, group that we've been working on. And there's funding coming in through the COG for to the tune of around $200,000. They're going to actually look at uh, there used to be a Regional Water Solutions Committee, still is, but they're going to use that to kind of organize that group. And just to kind of follow up on that, there is some cities.
$150,000 or so.
A little over 200. I don't know if it maxed out at 250. But anyway, there's uh, I would encourage you to get a part of that group.
Yeah, yeah. I talked with Laura.
Just so you don't end up doubling up with uh, uh, with your meetings.
Yeah, I I I talked with Laura at COG about that yesterday. So she's got me on the list.
Okay, cool. Look forward to seeing you at the next one then. Commissioner Starrett. Oh, before we get into yours, do you mind if, yes, I did. So Nerd Herd reached out yesterday. Uh, yesterday night at like 9:30 or 10:00 PM. And so um, they're requesting um, a letter of support for a grant that they're going out for. And for some reason, now and nowadays, for some reason, grants are coming out like 30 days before and then they're not submitting instructions until like two weeks before. So it's like always down to the wire of when, you know, letters of support need to be submitted. So they reached out to me. I sent you guys a letter this morning. If you got it and reviewed it, would you mind if I walk that on? And see if you guys are interested in approving a letter from the Board of Commissioners for the Nerd Herd in support of their grant funding efforts.
And we used to actually give them money during the budget hearings because they are such an impressive young uh, group of people. So I'm totally in favor of that.
Yes, I got it and I would be more than happy to.
All right. I appreciate that. So that's going to be item I. Make sure I get the right one. I four. Thank you, Ken. And thank you for the reminder. Um, I would make a mo- motion of approval. Is there any further discussion?
None for me.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you guys very much. And Bailey, if you can get that on some letterhead for us, that'd be fantastic. And I'll get it sent off to them. Commissioner Starrett, update.
Thank you so much, Chair. Uh, yes, yesterday, the Oregon Senate postponed that billion, I guess it's 4.3 at this point, uh, gas tax, wage tax for the third time, pushing it off till September 29th, saying there wouldn't be enough money to even get ODOT paid through Labor Day. So we're kind of scratching our heads on that. Uh, I did note, Commissioner uh, King, that you testified and said, this needs to pass. Well, what needed to pass in your estimation and according to the majority, well, the majority party and uh, basically saying that gas tax needs to be increased 15%, title fees 55%, doubling car registration fees. And when people start to look at the source of their misery when this thing passes and when things start to get really tight, um, look to the folks who who supported this, look to the folks who thought this was a good idea and look to the folks who passed this. I uh, I don't know. It's unconscionable and yet that's what's happening in Salem. In any event, uh, just to give you an idea of what's going on, a couple of things. Monday, attended the CCO Board Meeting and Executive Session, ongoing discussions regarding the CCO's 2026 contract with OHA. OHA's draft rates have been uh, inadequate at this point. CCO statewide are grappling with the same issue. Number two was the Mental Health Disabilities Advisory Committee. On Tuesday, we talked about as a certified community health community. Certified Community Health Behavioral Health Community Clinic Needs Assessment Review. We had to look at critical incidents, complaints, suicide attempts, staff safety incidents, access to behavioral health. We are in a hiring phase. We've got some really good people at the masters level therapists are being hired. Met with HHS Director and MAC Fire Chief Reed Godfrey and Operations Chief Amy Hanifin, Medicaid Medicare Funding. As we know, is just not covering it for our ambulances. And we talked about our next steps within the county to shore up funding for EMS. It is a statewide issue. One good thing we did find out this week, fortunately, our uh, ASA plan, after several years of revisions, has been approved by OHA. The CPR CPRD Board Meeting, um, they're looking at their SDCs for 26, 27 and looking at the rates. They're still discussing that $79 million for a trail. How's it going to be funded? A small percentage comes from their SDCs. The rest comes from grants. Um, so they continue to question how it's going to be funded. As far as the bypass trail goes, they're waiting for a number of permits, Army Corps, Department State of Land, Crabtree Park Chair, as you mentioned, January 1, the county takes over. And then uh, when their lease ends, it's ours. They're going to be doing um, uh, Jake with Park, uh, pickleball courts there, Ewing Young. There was a citizen presentation really calling the county to task for having denied the uh, application for that uh, bridge. The county denied the bridge permit application. If you remember, CPRD did not appeal that. And they would like to work with us going forward. They say they're beginning outreach to the neighbors on this. Task Force per Senate Bill 111503, I attended that, 17 members, and that had to do with uh, Task Force on Suicide Prevention. We are now part of the newly formed Suicide Prevention Coalition. Youth are uh, the second leading cause of death for young people. So uh, these are some things that we're looking at and uh, I've got a few more. Oh, just to let you know, anybody who has heard that uh, Department of Justice has um, sued the state of Oregon and Maine and the Secretaries of State for failing to provide information on voter registration rolls. I reached out to our clerk who said that the state is working through it all. Local clerks do not have any additional information. We're waiting to see what Oregon does and whether they'll change administrative rules. But we have been sued by the Department of Justice for not uh, handing over uh, information regarding voter maintenance role procedures.
Well, one question. Did you say you had, you came up with some ideas about the EMS or ASA?
We.
Or just talked about it?
Well, you know, that general, that general fund that it's a match fund that comes from the federal government. And then they're they're paying into it, but they're not seeing that money come back.
Okay.
So meeting with um, Health and Human Services Director and um, uh, and Chief Godfrey, we were pretty much looking at it being addressed as a statewide issue.
Right.
And getting AOC involved and having them be a little bit more involved than they have been because they haven't been. But we all know that it, at some point in time, our ambulance service area is is uh, that whole plan's going to have to change if they just they can't cover it.
Right. We see that with Sheridan and others, I'm sure. So.
Yeah, I think Sheridan might be a different story in terms of how finances have been handled. But yeah, the whole ambulance.
It contributes to it for sure.
Yeah, everybody's, everybody's having a hard time because the Medicare, Medicaid rates are not reimbursing them what they're paying out.
Yeah. And the alternatives are very scary.
Right.
For private sector ambulance coming in here. So.
Well, they wouldn't even.
They don't come out here.
They wouldn't do it because they wouldn't last long.
Yeah. I've heard some proposals and they're pretty bad. So.
Yeah.
It's on our radar. Appreciate that. Um, all right. So uh, I'm just going to kick off with Lafayette City Council Meeting. They discussed uh, upgrades to Veterans Park, which is uh, I'm looking forward to that. It's pretty cool what their vision is there and uh, yeah. Um, they also are re- um, they got a lot of construction that's firing up here on Bridge Street. So if you happen to drive through Lafayette, you may be in for a little bit longer of a delay, but it is very exciting. I drove on it this morning because they got part of it done to probably about eight blocks long and it's pretty nice. So congrats there. Uh, Saturday, uh, Willa, I went out to the Willamina Pump Track Grand Opening. Super cool. Um, I don't know if there's any of those in McMinnville, but I was watching those kids uh, go around on that track. And there was one kid, I was actually surprised and the photographer for West Valley Bulletin uh, actually got a picture of him, but he is, was at least five or six feet in the air uh, jumping off of one of these little ramps. It was pretty cool. Um, Hampton came out, uh, gave their kind of opening ceremony, ribbon cutting. Uh, Dave Hampton was there. Uh, Hampton Lumber had a booth there. They were giving away raffle bikes. Uh, the city had uh, was raffling off bikes. Uh, the police department, the tribal police department was there giving away bike helmets. Uh, it was quite a few people there and it is a very good showing. So that was cool. Uh, Pump Track is officially open, even though it's been open for a little over a month now already. Uh, Monday was Sheridan, Sheridan City Council Meeting was fairly light. Uh, they amended their codes that were relevant to um, acquiring account deposits for hooking up um, to water. Uh, and they also discussed their intergovernmental deal with Willamina for having Sedcor manage their enterprise zone uh, that they both signed on to. Uh, Tuesday was Dundee City Council Meeting. I gave an update for Crabtree Park. Um, during that update, uh, which I didn't mention um, when we were talking about the master parks planning. Um, I informed the Parks Board what I learned at the Dundee City Council Meeting when I brought up that CPRD was relinquishing Crabtree Park back to us, that uh, Dundee Fire uses that as a lifelight evacuate evacuation zone. So while we're planning, we need to be cognizant of what that looks like for Dundee Fire and be in communication with them. So always good to go to the city council meetings, make sure we're all up to date on. on current events and what's going on in the areas. Last night, as I mentioned, we met on site for Crabtree. Very, very good conversations. I am just, every time I go to a Parks Board meeting, I'm just more and more excited about that group that's out there. And John Olson's now a new member on it, and it's just, we just keep getting better and better. And the ideas that are coming out of that Parks Board are phenomenal. So I'm super excited to see now that we do have our master plan done and set, and see what the future's going to bring, as far as what we can bring in for funding. And with all the great ideas from the Parks Board, it's going to be nice. Tonight's Fair Board Meeting, Friday, Sanrec Dinner, Harvest Dinner, and then Saturday is Harvest Nights Dinner at the Heritage Museum. And a quick update, so this morning, we had our Parkway Committee Meeting. Cloud Corner is done. I thought it was interesting, because the estimate, original estimates were 18 million for McDougal to get roundabout constructed there. ODOT's lowered that estimate now to 16 million, which is good, it's going in the right direction. Cloud Corner came in at 11 million, which is even more, I think, puts us in even better position far as funding for McDougal. There is a roundabout that's coming up here for bid in the next two months. I can't remember where Anna told us it was at, but they're going to use those numbers to update the estimated 16 million for McDougal. So it sounds like we're getting more and more fine tuned of what the true cost is of McDougal. The downside is that we're running up against a timeframe with some of the funding that we originally got, I think it was from Bonamici's office years ago. It was about $4 million for McDougal. It has to be spent. So now we're deciding which project should be done in that area that will complement the McDougal Roundabout. The good and the bad of that, we'll get a project done. The bad of it is it's going to steal funding from what we were anticipating getting allocated to the McDougal project. So, kind of two steps forward, one step back. But I still feel very promising about where we're at and the direction we're going with McDougal. And that's all I got. That's it. Yep. Ken, I gavel out, do you have anything else to add? I think we're good, we got the letter that I forgot is on there. Everybody got their updates from the last three weeks. Thank you very much to everybody that comes and stays through the whole meetings, and we'll see you next Thursday.